All right. First item is approval of the agenda. Thank you all, by the way.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second. Move in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion passes.
Next item is the consent agenda. Any questions or anything on that? No, I want to entertain the motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Move in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any public comments? Versus special reports and presentation. Robert. The proclamation for Arbor Day. I'll read this off and then we will present to you. Great. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, co heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and the city of Baldwin City has recognized, has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now therefore, I, KC Semino, Mayor of the City of Baldwin City, Kansas, with the support of the City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Baldwin City. I call upon all residents of Baldwin City to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you for everything you guys do, Robert.
You bet.
Smile.
You couldn't tell?
Can I say a couple words?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. On April 30th, we'll be celebrating Arbor Day by planting four trees with the fifth grade classes at Besek. We will do that face to face again. And May 8th, that's a Saturday, we'll be doing our tree giveaway. From eight o'clock to 11:00 in front of Salden Square. Thank you.
Next is new business, organization resolution and agreement for credit card program. Lynn, you want to explain this?
Yes, since we've had a change, their city clerk, basically your credit card is basically kind of acting, not asking for an act of Congress, but an act of the city council to change the signature on our credit card to authorize credit limits or whatever. So that will be me, this is a blank, they actually call it a resolution here for their corporate purposes, whatever. So that's what we need to pass, it's just because Laura Hartman's no longer here, the poor Herb Brad Smith is no longer here, Dana Rutter's also, they were the names on the credit card application. So we changed that, so it's just going to be me for now to be able to make changes and whatever on here. So it looks kind of forbidding, but that's all it really is, is to change the signature. On we go.
Any questions on that? Any further discussion? No, I want to entertain the motion. Looking for the line. Line?
I'm sorry, I did not do a line.
Like in the theater. How should, I move we approve the organization resolution agreement for credit card. Approve the organization agreement for credit card.
Second. Move in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, mural grant application.
Good evening, Mayor Semino, members of City Council, we're happy to be here. My name's Jeanette Blackmar, the Director of the Lumberyard Art Center.
I'm Wendy Conover, the Director of the Baldwin City Library.
And you may not know this, but we are the co-directors of the Baldwin City Mural Program. And we come before you with a mural grant request, the amount of $2,014, to support the supplies and human labor artists to construct, create our fourth mural as part of the mural program in Baldwin City. This mural was rather unique in that it was a partnership with Baker University. It came out of a class that was taught by Dr. Cassie Bailey, actually in 2019. And from this class, the students were asked to think about the history, traditions, and identity of Baker University. And so out of this class, the students created their designs, and board of trustees, and student body, and staff and faculty voted on their favorite design, and the chosen mural. Thank you Lynn and Amara for giving that up. It's right there. Just kind of cock your head around. So it depicts, it's called Baker Family Tree, and it depicts the traditions on each of these leaves of some aspect of Baker University, its traditions and other aspects. So that's the mural. It's going to be located kind of at the intersection between Baker and downtown Baldwin City, on the Baker Maintenance Building at 702 Seventh Street. And so we're here just to request funding to see the completion of this project that will be done April and May. It might be in time for Baker graduation.
Yes, and we would add that, and as with our other murals, this one includes apprentices, most likely from Baker University and Baldwin High School. That's a really important part of the program. It allows mentoring of young people in our community. It allows leadership from some kids that may not be leaders in other areas, but they can really step forward and express their ideas and be part of something with the community. And that's a really powerful aspect of this program.
And our lead artist is Lisa Slaven, and she is a graphic artist. She has experience with the mural program and other works, artistic work, so we're pretty happy with our lead artist. And the Baker student who designed this, Elena Stefan, she will also be involved and is very interested in the program, as is Dr. Bailey. And so if you have any questions, we will like love to tell you more.
So it's a grant application, correct, as you mentioned?
Do you have any kind of matching talks?
Yeah.
So Baker is going to come in, the maintenance department is going to do some of the mounting and going to pay for some of the materials. And then we're leveraging time and using some paint, I think that we already had as well, so.
And they're also supplying some of the bolts and other hardware that we'll need to mount it.
The painting is different than the other murals, they're painting on a piece of wood and they're painting.
Marine grade plywood, so.
Yeah, it makes it easier to maintain.
Quick question technically on that one. I was driving by today, actually, so it's going to face, it's the north wall on the maintenance building facing campus, right?
Correct, yes.
That's going to look great. There's a window there, is that getting covered?
No, it's not.
Okay.
So it's eight foot by 12 foot, and it'll go on the west side of that window.
Okay, cool, all right.
And I think we have a picture of it in the application where it's going to relocate it. It's okay.
Any other questions for the agenda?
Yep, there it is.
Okay, got it.
And that's our team. And, and I would just want to finalize this by saying that part of the mural program and the design and the painting of this is open to the public. We will have public painting days. It'll be done in the Lumberyard Art Center, and we really would love to see all five council members participate in the painting of this mural. And Mayor Semino, you are welcome to join us as well. We will be doing a ribbon cutting as well.
If you can paint in the lines, you can do it.
But in all seriousness, it really does bring community together in a very powerful way. And this is not a one and done project, but we'll be constructing more murals to really, really showcase Baldwin City's history through visual public art. So join us, we'll be sending you emails.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Discussion from the council?
I think this is a great program. I think it helps visually people that visit the city, that go around, kind of do tours and look at the different murals. I think that adds a lot to the city.
There are other communities that do look to Baldwin City when they're starting their own programs.
All right, I want to entertain the motion.
I move we approve the Baldwin City Community Mural Program request of the amount of $2,014.
Move in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next item is the Fire Tree Estate 5B final plat. Ed? Go ahead, Jeff.
All right. Jeff Hill with Baldwin Land Company, like you said, seeking approval on the final plat of Fire Tree Phase 5B. That's the extension beyond what's currently developed. Twenty-eight lots on the very north side of Fire Tree. I think there's maybe six conditions there that it's subject to, but looking to get the final plat approved so we can move forward with the developer.
Do we have questions for Jeff?
Did that good of a job?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is just essentially an extension of what was approved kind of two years ago, two years ago.
So I know it went through the planning commission, I assume they had ample public notification around, you know, comments, how did that whole process work?
Mayor, Council, Scott to answer your question, yes. The planning commission is the public hearing per se by state statute. We notified all the neighbors around it. The first round for it, we had a pretty good number, people showed up for it, I think probably 20 to 30. And the first phase is, was developed, you know, it's two-thirds constructed now. I've had two or three phone calls prior to it, and people were supportive, just wanted to know what's going on, but did not have any public comment at the planning commission. And they unanimously recommended approval with the six attached conditions to the approving resolution.
I know, it was probably about a year ago, when there was other development conversations, there was the question of the runoff. I think this is pretty far west of that area of concern, if I'm right.
Yeah, in the first phase of this that he's referring to, there's a detention bond.
Right. Right, I saw that. But then it said that some of the runoff was still in planning, I was just making sure that that was still.
Well, we want to make sure, you know, the first phase has been two-thirds constructed. And one of the conditions is to have the engineer certify that the existing Phase 5A drainage plan, since now it's been constructed with lots, and we've done our best to protect and preserve the drainage area, that it's still in compliance because the Phase 5B comes through then.
Right.
So that's one of the conditions, that's the reason that we have a condition. At this point, it's been functioning well. You know, it's, I think when it's all completed, and it'll be designed appropriately, and two-thirds of it's going to go into the detention base, and another one will come along the east side, then trickle back behind the west side of where the existing fire tree was at.
So what is the city's responsibility with all of it? I mean, the need for the infrastructure? The developer does that?
Yeah, the developer provides the infrastructure, and then the city maintains that. The roads, the sewer, water, electricity is part of the current property owners and future property owners for that. The detention, what we've done is have easements so that we could secure that the future as development occurs, that the runoff will work as designed as part of the plan.
All right, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? No, I want to entertain the motion.
I move we approve Fire Tree Estate 5B final plat.
Second.
Move in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, council committee report, budget finance, Scott.
Yeah, we had a meeting, since the last council meeting, we had three topics that we covered. The first one was, if you recall, the $108,000 unbudgeted power generation cost during the whole snap that we had. So it was discussed of options on how do we recoup that? And the committee agreed that it made the most sense to fund that 180K out of the general fund, which Baker Tilly validated will support that. And then we're going to make the power cost adjustment across 12 months to recoup that 180K. The, I think the numbers aren't finally yet for March, but it's estimated that, you know, an individual average resident can currently see about $5.44% per month increase for 12 months to recoup the 180K. Plus, obviously, the empty vigor, and USC 340 will also see power cost adjustments. Just trying to relate what the average resident see, and that was one of the reasons, try to spread it out over 12 months, to make that really as low as possible. So that's what the committee decided to do, to order, try to recruit that. It fits in the budget, so it's, it'll work.
Questions on that, comments, concerns?
The next thing we discussed was the Bauer Building, proposed funding, we're on like the third scenario there, and CDC can keep me, in case you keep me honest here, but the plan is put forth, and Baker Tilly has also validated that it works within the current budget, is to, for the construction bond debt, you know, minus the state tax credits, that's what we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to bond out. To make those bond payments, they found that with FTE savings, headcount savings in the current budget, with the tax credit, the tax, not the credits, but the tax rates staying where they're at, that we could fit that in, I think it was about $105,000 annual was what the calculation was on the debt payment. So, was it 80?
That's how much savings there was, that's, we had.
Oh, so, I remember, I got in the transfer. So we had $105,000 budget savings through FTE?
He budgeted $105,000 and figured that we could put $20,000, $25,000 in a bond.
So that's the key, though, yeah, so it's just a construction cost is what they're proposing to pay out of the general fund currently. So that prevents having to go out and get a sales tax increase. It would be a way to move forward within the current budget structure that we have. Obviously, it's going to hit 2024, 2023 opening?
2024 will be the first budget.
Right, so 2023, completion of the construction, we then hit the budget in 2024. So what we ask Baker Tilly to do is come forward in this budget planning process, obviously we can see, you know, where that lands out in 2024, plus the debt load as well, we can kind of see where that is, what drops off, and we'll kind of see where that goes out over the tenure period. So that's, that was a plan that's presented, obviously, at the council, part of the budget process, and the bond process to approve that.
And there's a word to it, it'll be on the end of council agenda, so.
Some details.
I know you have a lot of, people are going to have a lot of questions on that, but still working through committee, and we'll have the full discussion in the council.
We don't know how long the period of time that will be hanging on there.
It'd be a 20-year bond. Yes, well. 20-year bond, but Baker Tilly thinks we can kind of pay off. Right. Like I said, we'll go, there's a lot more to this that. Obviously, we can't do it during committee reports because it wasn't on the agenda, and we'll address that.
We're bringing more detail, yeah, good questions. So yeah, it'll be future discussion around that. Last thing we talked about was the library's request to remove the mill levy cap, the ordinance that they would send to four mills, and state max is five, as you recall, they have to get that removed. So a discussion around that, and that's really, you know, it really is kind of intertwined with the Centville 13 or.
Yeah, there's a Centville, there are required notifications. Not if the mill levy goes up, but if you receive more revenue. So even if assessed valuations keep going up, and you're receiving more money from those assessed valuations, you don't change your mill levy, that triggers hearings and different things, so. We're still, finance committee's still trying to look through all that and understand.
I mean, that's going to change how the city actually, you know, budgets as well potentially. So it's a neutral based, you know, neutral revenue based budget to where if we are collecting, I'm just using random numbers, 40 mills of the city to drive revenue off the property values, which I think is roughly 35 million. So one mill is about $35,000 roughly. So historically, we kept, kept the mill levy at 40, but the property values went up 3%. The revenue we got was 3% more the following year. So you could keep your mill levy flat, but you could follow the, you know, the assessed value trend up and down. What this bill would potentially do is eliminate that. So kind of freeze you at, you know, if we're 35 million for 40 mills, you know, they freeze us there. And then if we want to add 3% next year, we'd have to go to the public and publish and ask for more mills to get the additional 3%. So no longer can you just stay flat and use the appreciated value of your property. And that will affect what's going on with the library as well. Similar kind of, you know, request notification would be required of them as well, anybody that, you know, asks for mill levies. So trying to figure out, and we were told that that's going to impact 2022, it starts in 2022. So the budget process that we're going through right now, we'll need to rationalize that.
Yeah, I think it starts this budget cycle from, our understanding from the county
Correct, yeah. It's start budget cycle.
We have to make that.
Right.
For the 2020, yes.
So what we, what we pass in August, we'll have to rationalize the fact that we may have to change the mill levy to get more revenue, where in the past we wouldn't have to if the price value.
Well, you don't have to change the mill levy, except the assessed valuation purchase is either accepting or denying.
Okay.
Right. But you don't change, you don't have to change.
But if you didn't change the assessed value, you could raise the mill levy.
I think we have a lot more.
That's the challenge, right. So there's going to be more scrutiny on how we actually look at what the revenue stream is on that for sure. And how the public certified, and how the public weighs in on what's going on, so.
There's a lot. It's going to be an interesting.
And it's happened like right now, I think it passed, I assume the governor signed it.
The way the county was talking at our meeting.
It's been signed.
Yeah.
Literally just happened, so. Where we started with this is that will may impact how, you know, even if we remove the mill levy cap, they'll have some other challenges about going out and asking for more.
So I just have one question about that. So will that library discussion be separate from budget discussion, since we already met with their board?
Well, we're meeting, the library's coming to the finance committee tomorrow or Thursday. You know, we're going to have that discussion a little bit there, just to kind of everybody get their heads up around it. And I think, you know, the whole council will be learning more and more about the Centville and how this is going to affect, and the team will try to learn about it so we can educate us as well.
I think, to answer your, my opinion, answer your question is, yeah, I think it's going to be a council decision on, you know, if there is an opportunity to reverse that ordinance and let, and give them the full five, I think that's, you know, a council decision based on, you know, you know, in my mind, what they want to do, how they want to get there. So it's their planning, right, it's their vision. It's almost like a city department, but they're really not. Since we control that mill, which is their revenue stream, we kind of have to treat it that way. It just, it just kind of fit it in where it prioritizes what we're, we're as, as the council trying to do in this budget plan. And they're, they're on board with that, they, you know, so I would think they're going to come back with a refreshed plan and an ask about why they believe they need, you know, that cap release. That's kind of what we challenge them with, I think that first discussion is on Thursday, but it will be a full council readout and decision. Good. Next meeting Thursday, sorry, 7:45 a.m.
Yeah, we met on the 22nd. I just had three kind of agenda items. Discussed the branding guidelines again, remember there's some issues with that page one? And Lynn kind of went through there and made that pretty personal, the Baldwin. It was really the issue with that page one that she kind of rewrote, and that came through CDC, and we're going to go through that, I think that'll probably come out before us here, I guess in the next council meeting. Had a discussion about the Bauer Building. That was just kind of more of a status as to what that, we've had, like you said, about three different scenarios about what can happen there. Yeah, talking through that, giving an update there, and then Jeanette and Wendy presented for the mural grant. We meet again on the 26th at 4:00.
What would say this is?
We have not met since the council meeting, and our next meeting is Tuesday, the 13th at 4:00.
Our committee hasn't met since the last council meeting either. However, we did have presentations of needs from the public works departments, the fire chief and police chief at our work session that we had. And that was very helpful, as always, and was much appreciated. My next meeting of public works is Thursday, until 8:00 at 9:00.
Legislative Board?
We have not met either since the last meeting. I need to finish up the report for the strategic plan sessions that we have and get that to you, Mr. Mayor. Other than that, I'm not sure if there's anything that the council or the mayor thinks that we should be working on currently. I know the census returns, I think, are being delayed, from my understanding, and that was one of the things we were monitoring, because it definitely switches to a different classification of city. If there are other issues, I'm happy to have Legislative Committee meet, but off the top of my head, I can't think of anything that we aren't already handling as a council. Well, if you do, you're here, and we'd be happy to, and still drag everybody in there just to chit chat, so.
The administrative staff, anything?
Just one thing, this Monday, the contractor and KDOT met out our Revrow Crossing, they did make repairs. They actually installed some bollards so you cannot drive across the tracks. They actually moved one of the concrete slabs a few inches, they fastened that down, so I don't think there's a chance it will ever move again. And they did some striping, so KDOT will now schedule a final inspection for the project as a whole, because we're not quite done with everything, we still have some trees to plant, which it did two weeks ago. So we'll probably the next week have a final inspection from KDOT, and we'll walk through, and then the project we basically completed, and we'll open the crossing back up at that point, so. Everything went pretty smooth, there was really no huge changes, they just, like I said, moved the, one of those slabs, refastened it, and it didn't take too long to do that, so that's all squared away. We should have that opening in the next couple of weeks at the most, the crossing should be back open, so.
Any council comments?
I have just a couple announcements. We did get final approval finally from KDOT to put a crossing in Heritage a few years later. They are not going to allow us to lower the speed limit, but said that hopefully when development goes in, probably, I would assume between Heritage and John Deere and that area, that if it gets more dense, they probably they'll allow that. However, the city has to pay for that. KDOT's not paying for it. So Lynn and I discussed, we met with the KDOT representative yesterday, and I think we're going to, we have to extend those sidewalks out to 56th Highway, and we probably want to just try to do that in-house to save on costs. And then we also have to do the striping across, across the highway, and then we can put flashing lights, pedestrian lights there, so it's more than we've ever had. I'm proud of that, that it just took us a while to even get to this point, so. That is coming, as soon as we move, we'll hop in his team and see when we can start that work, but it shouldn't be too expensive, we had a couple of grants we were looking at, but we figured for the size of the project, it probably wasn't worthwhile to expend city resources and time to do that. We're going to talk to BG about submitting and getting us a site plan for that to submit KDOT forward, so. That is moving forward. We did, some, on my gentleman, harvested some walnut trees, we did sell those, the city collected $19,000 for that, and we're going to use $10,000 of that to, for our celebration, since it was being missed out on last year. Matt from the RAC is working on that, getting a couple, or it's just not as grandiose as what it was, but probably a couple orders to sing in Sullivan Square, and then hopefully a small artwork show, but I don't know if I could just tee it out enough for my mission that. Lynn, am I missing anything?
Probably, but fuck, I can't think of anything else. How many other things we got going on?
Other than that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Your turn.
Moving to second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passed, we are adjourned.